This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, October the 14th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let's pray together. Our Father God, in the name of your Son, Jesus, we humble ourselves here at the gates of our city. Nothing is more important to us this morning than to know that your presence is welcome here. Would you favor us today? As we get pause through the darkness of domestic violence in thought today, we pray for victims even in our community and our nation. And then, Lord, we humbly pray the prayer. Father, forgive us. When we hear your word, tell us if we would just, those of us called by your name, we had prayed, seek your face, turn from our, well, our wicked ways, you would hear from heaven. And you would heal our land. We welcome your hand in our city. Would you bless our leaders today, Father, as they lead us in the ways of righteousness? In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God and in the visible liberty of justice.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our October the 14th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask that anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate position. Interpersonate desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign a indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate desiring to speak to the council on another agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the city clerk office and wish to speak on another agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wished to respond. To maintain the corner, there will be known to applause or public outcry allowed. Donald Clerk.
Approval of minutes of September the 9th and 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. Great crowd. Certainly appreciate everybody being here today. Yesterday was a big day in the city of Mobile. For those that saw information on the news having to do with the deepening and widening of the channel, which is now 50 feet deep. There were probably more dignitaries from around the state of Alabama at that one event than in any event that I've been at in the last 12 years, simply because the port of Mobile impacts the entire state of Alabama. And people in Tuscaloosa, Birmingham, Huntsville, they all recognize that now. And so they have a keen interest of what's going on. We are now the deepest port along the Gulf Coast. We continue to say from a promotional standpoint that Mobile will be the gateway to America on the Gulf Coast. It will be the first port of call for the big container ships where they'll unload some of their cargo here before they move to other ports. Huge, huge game changer from an economic development standpoint. The visionary for that was Senator Richard Shelby, who realized when he was on a trip through Singapore that they were deepening their channel and they thought, why can't we do that in Mobile? And it was with that seed being planted and recognizing what it would mean to the entire state of Alabama, he started the wheels and motion to secure part of the funding. At some point, it came incumbent upon the state to match some of those funds. That's about the time when Governor Ivey proposed the rebuild Alabama gas tax. So that gas tax increase, some of that money goes for our matching fund, the federal funds to pay for the deepening of the channel. Again, a huge game changer. So many people were involved, but yesterday, a big celebration for that. Also, following that celebration was the third, what they call the FOW, Final Assembly Line for Airbus. Airbus will be doubling its production for the A320. So when you look at aircraft, commercial aircraft production, the leading cities are Toulouse, France, Hamburg, Germany, and Seattle, Washington. Mobile will be number four. In Seattle, they've been building planes for 100 years. In Toulouse, I think about 70, and Hamburg 60. I may have those two numbers reversed, but we've only been building planes for 10 years. And all the dignitaries that were here from Europe and other places were saying that this has never happened before, that you've gone to building no airplanes and 10 years later, you're in the process of going to be building 20 airplanes a month. Huge, huge compliment to our workforce, to the men and women that are working at Airbus, that are working with their hands, working with their minds, you know, to make it work. But it's a huge reflection upon the city of Mobile and everybody that's come together to improve our workforce and give them opportunities that they wouldn't have. So great to hear all the compliments that were being given to everybody involved in all those projects. And from people ask me about, from time to time, about some of the economic development projects that we have going on. One perspective would be that Airbus choosing to build airplanes in Mobile and what they're doing with that today changes the image of what we can do. And by that, I mean, other companies are trying to decide whether to come here or not. And they say, why did Airbus go to Mobile? And so they call Airbus and Airbus says, you know, we have had a wonderful experience in Mobile. And that's the kind of collaboration that you want, you know, that's the kind of reputation that you want to have in South Eric, because at the end of the day, it's men and women that are working, that are living all over this city and in this region that are putting those planes together. So big, big day yesterday. Appreciate everything that the city council has done, the county commission, the governor, the state delegation. So the best is yet to come for the city of Mobile. Got back from Ireland last week. The Chamber of Commerce had a sponsored ship, a sponsored trip. Every year, they sponsor trips. Typically, it's across the United States. We try to go somewhere with a support city where there's housing opportunities. It could be workforce development. And so you go to see different sites while you're there. You travel to kind of gather in a group so you get to interact with people that you would not otherwise interact with. And through those relationships, we can start building on some of these projects, capturing ideas where somebody's had success and a place where we're trying to do something that maybe they've already done. On a personal note and point of personal privilege, my wife and I decided that we were going to take a couple of days after that to celebrate our 50th wedding anniversary, which I appreciate her organizing all that. And so I was at an event and somebody tapped me on the shoulder and I turned around and the one anybody there, and then I turned the other way. And my four children and all their spouses were there, standing there, huge surprise. The emotions that, first off, I was confused about where was I? And then, you know, I almost cried. And then I said, well, how long y'all gonna be there? And they said, we're gonna be here all week with y'all. And that's when I did cry because I knew I'd be paying for it. But anyway, great memory, lots of fun. So anyway, we have an Employee of the Month, and I'm not sure who's going to be given the Employee of the Month record. Yep. Carleen, yes. Carleen.
So Sean Meeks is the Employee of the Month for Public Works. Today, we celebrate not just an achievement, but the spirit that makes our team thrive. Sean embodies the attributes of a successful colleague and has a positive impact on everyone around him. When facing a challenge, he responds not with frustration, but determination and usually a little humor at the end of it. Building Services is the property management division of REEM, and Sean works daily to solve the city's problems, solve problems on behalf of the city. He can be found out in the streets during Mardi Gras, ensuring that each portlet is placed in the exact spot it belongs, as well as testing generators before hurricane season starts on city facilities. Sean is a great ambassador for the department and for the city of Mobile. He loves his job and it shows. Sean, we thank you and congratulations.
At this time, Vice President of Governmental Affairs for USA, Nick Logus. I'll introduce his guest.
Thank you, Mayor Stimson, President Small, members of the council. Just take a quick moment to introduce him. Thank you, Mayor, for spending some time with us this morning. And again, congratulations on your 50th wedding anniversary, looking back at the university as 62 years young and the largest employer in the region. And what we try to do, much like Leadership Mobile, we have our own leadership class called Leadership South, which we take individuals from departments across the entire university of 12,000 employees to help them better understand the community that we work in and engage with, such as the city council, and bring them down here to meet you all today. So with that, my Leadership South class, if you will, please stand up and be introduced. They're here with you today. So give them a round of applause for joining you. We will see you afterwards for lunch in the commission chambers. Councilman Carroll, I understand you're chief timekeeper today, so please make sure we're done by noon if you can. Thank you, sir. And that, and too, tonight is game day, so I hope to see all of you there, all the guests. We play Arkansas State at 6:30. Mayor-elect, we made sure the announcers, for those that don't know, Mayor-elect will be tossing the coin in tonight's game. And we have made sure, Anna Catherine, wave your hand, where you at? She has personally coached the announcing staff to make sure that it's chair goddess. So we've got it. You're covered tonight, all right? With that being said, we thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and introduce our Leadership South class, and we'll see y'all later. Thank you.
I have one proclamation to read, and it's for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is anyone here to receive this? Okay. Okay, yes, come on down. Tony, good to see you. So Tony represents Penelope House. So whereas once a secret kept in families, domestic violence is now recognized as a serious crime, one that has severe consequences for the survivors, their children, employers, and community. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals in society, wherein this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men ages 18 and older in the United States have been victims of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas stopping the cycle of this vicious crime requires not only the resolve and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all. And now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, and the members of the Mobile City Council, in recognition of Penelope House, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Domestic Violence Awareness in the Month, done in the city of Mobile on this 14th day of October 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And I have to say, you know, domestic violence was not talked about a lot. And for it to hear mentioned in the prayer, to see all y'all in your purple, we've come a long way, but unfortunately, domestic violence is still a huge issue in Mobile and around the U.S. It's everywhere. And it's sad that it's everywhere. A lot of what we do is provide emergency services, but what we try to do is prevention. And so my request for everyone here today is to talk to your children about healthy relationships because we have to break the cycle. So the theme this year is awareness is key, but awareness is the first step, action is the second step. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for wearing your purple and the proclamation.
Thank you for all that you do.
That concludes my remarks. Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is Ms. Toki Dunn here this morning? Would you please come down to the podium, please? As she approaches the podium this morning, the council has a proclamation and resolution on behalf of National Lead Free Month, and the council would like to read to you this proclamation that we have. So whereas the Mobile County Health Department and the Alabama Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program strive to support efforts to ensure that all children who live in Mobile County and in the state of Alabama are lead-free. And whereas lead is a naturally occurring metal that can cause negative health outcomes, and this observance highlight the many ways parents and guardians can reduce children's exposure to their environment. And whereas there is no safe blood lead level in children, which has been identified, and even at low levels, can cause permanent disabling conditions, developmental delays, and behavioral issues. And whereas National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week is a call to bring together communities, health providers, organizations, industries, and local tribal and state governments to increase poison prevention and awareness. And whereas the goal of recognizing this week is to increase public knowledge about the dangers of lead, promote testing and reporting, as well as encourage increased awareness to help reduce exposure and poisoning. And now therefore, I, William Carroll of District 2, and the members of the Mobile City Council, in support of the efforts to advance health and the safety of all, do hereby proclaim October 19th through the 25th, 2025, as National Lead Poison Prevention Week, done this day in the city of Mobile, Alabama.
To the mayor, city council president, city council members, staff, and public, good morning. My name is Toki Dunn, and I am the Director of Community Prevention Programs at the Mobile County Health Department, where the Lead Poisoning Prevention Program is under the Bureau of Community and Nutrition Services, under the leadership of Pebbles King, under the Executive Director of Prevention and Wellness, Dr. Stephanie Woods Crawford, and the leadership of Mobile County Health Officer, Dr. Kevin Michaels. There is no safe levels of lead for children. Exposure and poisoning can cause a host of issues, including developmental delays, behavioral issues, lifelong problems, and even more devastating effects. Lead Poisoning Prevention, National Lead Poison Prevention Week starts next week, October 19th through the 25th, and we would like everyone to become lead-aware in an effort to keep Alabama's and especially Mobile County's children lead-free. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the notice on October the 25th in Frye Park, October the 18th on Sheeranham Drive, and October 31st, Creekwood Drive. So moved.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 4350 Moffett Road.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 2602, 2610, 2612, 2614, and 2616, Ocel Road and 1057 and 107 Item Avenue from R1 and B2 to B2.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider an amendment to the Downtown Development District regulating plan to rezone property located at 250 St. Francis Street from T 5.1 to T 5.2.
This opened up a public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to revoke the business license at 1608 St. Stevens Road.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If so, if I come down and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Robert Laskin, the Public Safety Director for the city of Mobile. I don't know if the council recalls, about six months ago, we had a few people come down from the neighborhood around 1608 and voiced several complaints, including one woman with a very impassioned plea and was terrified we should do it. I spent about a half hour to 45 minutes with her out in the atrium after the meeting. And she described what her life was like and what this club was doing to her neighborhood and the things that she witnessed going on. Based upon that information, we had the Mobile PD look into the club and its operations and what was going on in the neighborhood. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Charlena from our legal department, and she will walk you through what we found.
Yeah, right now, just on the one party at the podium.
Good morning. On the city's behalf, we're here to present the recommendation. I'm sorry?
A little bit closer to the mic.
Can you hear me? We're here to present the recommendation for the business license of Fat Tuesdays located at 1608 St. Stevens Road to be revoked, which obviously the city council has the authority under 3464 of our city ordinance. The purpose is to demonstrate that they have operated in a.
Get a little bit closer to the mic.
Sir?
Get a little bit closer to the mic.
We'll be closer. Okay.
Just like that, you have to speak right into it.
Thank you. It's loud on my side, so. Under 3464, there's a determination. There we go. We got it. To determine whether the Fat Tuesdays is operating in a way that endangers the public safety and disrupts the community. Since 2022, the MPD has responded to over 270 calls for services at this address, and these calls include shootings, assaults, weapons violations, narcotics activity, disorderly conduct, and overcrowding incidents in illegal alcohol sales. The, at least two search warrants have been issued for this location, one dating back to 2022, and most recently in August of 2025. This resulted in the arrest of the business owner for a weapon in possession of a person forbidden to have a weapon. The repeated incidences that have required substantial MPD resources have disrupted the nearby neighborhoods and place patrons and the communities at risk. So the cumulative record shows that the business has created conditions detrimental to the public safety and welfare. We have two officers here to testify today, Lieutenant Rusty Hardiman and Lieutenant Tilford Saunders of the Mobile Police Department, and they will testify to the frequency of police responses and the nature of those incidents and the ongoing community impact. The evidence will show that these are not isolated incidents, but a continuing pattern of disorder and law enforcement involvement. The city has provided due notice to an opportunity for this hearing, and the business owner is here today. So based on this record and after the testimony, we will be asking you to revoke the business license of Fat Tuesdays at 1608 St. Stevens Road. First, I'd like to call Mr. Rusty Hardiman.
My name is Mac Russell Hardiman. Everyone calls me Rusty. I'm a lieutenant with the Mobile Police Department.
What is your current assignment?
I'm currently assigned to the 3rd Precinct.
And how long have you been with Mobile Police Department?
I graduated the academy 30 years ago yesterday.
What are your current duties and your area of patrol?
I'm a shift commander, which means that I'm responsible for the patrol shift that's on duty. My current responsibility is 3rd Precinct, which is pretty much everything north of Airport Boulevard and Government Street. That is east of Interstate 65, which would be the northeast corner of the city.
Are you familiar with the business known as Fat Tuesdays located at 1608 St. Stevens Road?
I am.
And how did you become familiar with this location?
I've been familiar with it the most of my career, but recently, it has drawn a lot of attention, requiring a lot of my officers' presence there.
How many times have you or your units responded to incidents of Fat Tuesdays?
In the six or seven years I've been in 3rd Precinct, I've probably been there 50 times.
And this year alone, how many calls would you anticipate?
This year alone, there have been close to 100. Since October of last year, there have been close to a cause, 100 incidents at that location.
Okay, now, when we say incidents, give us some idea what you're talking about. These aren't all weapons-related or by any means.
No. I went through, I had the operator pull the call history for that address and then for the intersection of St. Stevens and Dunbar, which is where the club is, and then St. Stevens and Lambert, which is the intersection across the street from the club. And there were over 100, or right at 100. And I eliminated traffic stops, traffic accidents, and stuff that was obviously in the roadway that would not be a result of the club itself. So we're talking about disorderly calls, loud calls, domestic calls, shootings, assaults, illegal parking, drug violations. I mean, the list goes on and on.
Let's talk about some of that illegal parking. Does that parking get out into the roadway?
Yes, it does.
Does it block where emergency responders can get through or can failed to get through?
Yes. I myself, as a lieutenant, I've written over a dozen parking tickets there for people parking on the sidewalk, blocking fire hydrants. On Dunbar Street, they would park on both sides of the street and prevent, it would prevent emergency vehicles from getting through to the residential area behind the club. Along Lambert Street, both sides of the road, they park on the grass across the street. They park in the city right of way. I've even seen them park on the bridge over Three Mile Creek, just down from the club.
Have you ever personally interacted with any individuals there?
Oh, yes.
Tell us about that.
Are you talking about patrons or?
Both.
I have had issues with several patrons. You know, we've been parking here for years, you haven't done anything about it. Well, I haven't seen it before, so now I'm gonna write these tickets. I've made arrests. I'm gonna write these tickets. I've made arrests. Just on September the fourteenth, I had my vehicle parked in the parking lot across the street about one-thirty in the morning, when an individual came from the club, came over, spoke to me in my vehicle, and after speaking to me, proceeded to urinate on the side of my vehicle. And of course, I placed him under arrest for that. But I mean, this was just, you know, three weeks ago, or right a month ago now, with me sitting in the vehicle, so.
What kind of resources does this take to monitor this one location?
Pretty much every weekend, my entire squad is there, from about two o'clock in the morning until we get off at five. And sometimes, when we come on at five, we have to go up there because it's still going at five or six o'clock in the morning on Sunday mornings.
And when you say that, you're talking on Sunday mornings after it's no longer legal to have alcohol or sell alcohol?
Yes. What we've seen is usually about one-thirty or two o'clock, when the rest of the bars in Mobile shut down, that's when his crowd picks up. I've gone by there at one-thirty, and there will be twenty cars in the parking lot, and go back by there at two-thirty, and it literally looks like Broad Street on Joe Kane Day.
Now, what is the occupancy of this business location?
Uh, sixty-five.
And so, tell us from this room, how big an area it is, the interior of this business?
The interior is about from here to the back wall, maybe a little more squared.
Are they habitually overcrowded?
Yes.
Have you had an occasion to contact either the ABC Board or the Fire Marshal, either one for this overcrowding situation?
I've called the Fire Marshal myself twice. The first time, he arrived, and he went inside and shut the business down for being overcrowded. The second time, when we got there, it was overcrowded, but by the time the Fire Marshal got there and he went inside, many of the patrons had been escorted out and told not to be in the business because they knew what was coming that time.
Have you personally made any efforts to approach the owner to try to deal with the situation and correct it?
He approached me after I contacted the ABC Board to get them to go up there and check to make sure he was within his legal rights of selling, when he was selling alcohol. The ABC Board made a visit, a cursory visit, and basically gave him a warning that this was still going on. The following weekend, at four in the morning, I was there. The crowd was still, you know, just overflowing, and I said, "Aren't you supposed to be closed just after two o'clock?" And his response was, "I'm not selling alcohol. I'm selling food." And if I wasn't open, I couldn't eat.
This was when you visited at four in the morning?
Yes, this was about four o'clock in the morning, on a Sunday morning.
Have you personally responded to incidents, or do you have any personal knowledge of incidents involving firearms or weapons at this location?
My squad has recovered several firearms from the location. Usually, when they make arrests for other things, when they're towing the cars, or people will have firearms on them in the parking lot. I have personally responded to one of the shootings up there, and the shooting on August the thirty-first, one of my officers was almost shot. That shooting occurred, officers were already there trying to handle the overcrowded situation. Someone left the club, went across the street, got a weapon out of their car, and started shooting, and one of my officers said he heard the bullet go by his ear.
Your professional opinion, Officer, have repeated police responses to this establishment strained the MPD resources that are available or affected public safety in this area?
Yes.
That was about that.
Could you repeat that question?
Yes. My question was, in his professional opinion, have the repeated police responses to this establishment strained the Mobile Police Department resources available or affected the public safety in this area?
And yes, they have. And usually, on Saturday nights, early Sunday mornings, the crowd gets so out of hand that my entire squad has to be up there, either to try to clear the parking lots, get the streets open so emergency vehicles can go down the side streets. When that occurs, there's no one else to answer calls in the Third Precinct. If another call comes out, I either have to make the decision to let someone leave here, which is a volatile situation, or have someone come from another precinct to answer calls in my precinct, which makes the other precincts run short at that time. So it doesn't just create a problem around the club. It creates a problem citywide.
So you have personally witnessed these type issues. Have you noticed the same individuals or groups frequently involved in these incidents at this location?
It's always the same people. I've written people tickets today and, or last week, and, or writing them another ticket. It's like, "You just gave me one last week. Well, then you shouldn't park there again." So it's the same people every weekend. It's the same problem.
Are the businesses in close proximity to Fat Tuesdays?
Yes, there are other businesses.
Does this issue with Fat Tuesdays affect those businesses adversely?
The other businesses aren't open, but we get complaints from the other businesses about the trash in their parking lots and the things that happen at their businesses when they're not open.
Okay.
Oh, and one more thing. When I spoke about the close to a hundred calls at that business just since October of last year, I went through, over eighty of those calls have been between one AM and six-thirty AM in the morning, and the other businesses there are not open during that time. It's just, it shows the frequency of calls there at night when this club is open. We are always there.
How many staff members or management have you interacted with, with any of your investigations or responding on these calls?
Just the owner.
Just the owner?
Yes, ma'am.
And the efforts you have made to persuade him to rectify the situation?
I told him that he was responsible. "All of this is going on because of your club." And his response was, "I can't control if they're having a block party over there. I can't control what's happening across the street." Well, the people coming from, they're walking from across the street to your club. If your club wasn't open right now at four AM on a Sunday morning, these people wouldn't be here. And like I said, his response was, "If I wasn't open, I couldn't eat."
Officer, based on your experience, thirty years, does Fat Tuesdays pose a continuing threat to public safety?
It does.
Do they contribute to ongoing criminal activity in that area?
Yes, they do.
Do you believe additional police intervention or monitoring would be necessary if the business remains open?
Absolutely.
Is there anything else the city council should know about your experiences with this establishment?
There are other establishments of that type in the Third Precinct, and we do not spend nearly the same amount of time answering calls at those establishments that we do at this one.
And the owner has demonstrated no willingness to do anything about this?
No. He accused me of targeting his business, and if I wasn't called here, if we didn't have the problems here, I wouldn't be here. I don't want to be there.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Tilford Saunders will be testifying regarding some of the drug activity that has taken place. Say your name for the prosecution.
Tilford Saunders.
Saunders, Lieutenant Saunders, how are you in charge?
I'm a lieutenant, Mobile Police Department, and I'm the Narcotics Vice Commander.
How long have you been in that capacity?
Since April of this year.
April of this year?
Correct.
Okay. How often have you been dispatched to Fat Tuesdays?
Between my whole entire career, many times.
How does it work now that you're just with the drug activity? How do you get called out for this location?
Normally, we get a complaint, and then we respond to the complaints as they are written. This particular establishment had been complaining about illegal sales of narcotics and also alcohol sales on Sundays.
Okay, so the trouble in the parking lot, the other disorderly type thing, this is going to be Lieutenant Hardeman, and you're going to get called out for drug activity?
Correct.
All right. Well, when you have been called out, what did you personally do?
So the first thing we do is we try to see if anybody's in compliance. We work in an undercover capacity. So I send various entities into the establishment, the parking lots, and around the surrounding areas, just to see if they're in violation. During this time, we was able to witness openly inside the club marijuana just being passed around, openly being rolled blunts in the establishment or in the wide open. We was also able to purchase narcotics from behind the bar, from a bartender. So we was also able to purchase alcohols between the hours of two to ten on Sundays, which is in violation. I was able to reach out to the ABC Board, who advised me that they had spoken early July to Lieutenant Hardeman in reference to his complaints of the sales. They advised me that they had spoken to Mr. Johnson in reference to Sunday sales. Well, I didn't know that occurred because we work in an undercover capacity, but after they spoke to him, three consecutive Sundays afterwards, he was still in violation of selling alcohol during those times. So I got with the ABC Board, and we responded out there early August, and he was cited for violation of buying and selling on Sundays, and also, he was given a warning for persons charged sign. Basically, what happened to happen is every bar has to have a person in charge. They write their name up, and that person has to match. So he was given a warning at that time.
Have you interacted with anyone other than Mr. Johnson, Mr. Richard Johnson at this location?
Personally, myself, I only spoke to Mr. Johnson.
Okay. What substances have you seized from this location?
We actually, it was purchased, as I said, we purchased marijuana behind the bar. We also executed a search warrant on around August the fourteenth, where we seized a firearm and was charged to the owner.
Did the owner specifically receive a criminal charge?
He did.
And what was that charge?
Certain person forbidden.
Were any of the patrons or employees suspects in selling drugs?
They were.
Can you tell us a little bit? We don't want you to tell us about ongoing cases that are still pending. Can you tell us a little bit that doesn't interfere with your-
We have, we have purchased illegal substance from an individual that is a bartender that works at sixteen oh-eight.
So they're aware of this activity?
They are.
Have you had any conversations with the owner regarding stopping this activity?
Yes, I did briefly, and he explained to me that, he asked me why didn't I arrest the female at this time.
Anything else from him?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay. In your professional opinion, in your professional opinion, have repeated responses here made any dent in the activity here?
Uh, no. As I'm evaluating this establishment, what I see is the alcohol sales, and it allows those entities, when they have nothing else to do, they come to this establishment, and those same individuals that I see inside of the club are problems outside the club. There are drug dealers that actually come to that establishment to do alcohol and do what they do, sell drugs. We have met numerous individuals inside the club that we are, you know, expected drug dealers. So in our fashion, we can actually tell you who those entities are, but it'd be, we got ongoing investigations.
Lieutenant Saunders, you heard Lieutenant Hardeman testify. Based on your experience, does Fat Tuesdays pose a continuing threat to public safety?
It does.
Does it contribute to the ongoing criminal activity in the area?
It does.
Do you believe additional police intervention or monitoring would be necessary if that business remains open?
I've seen it myself, where I've seen the patrol officers take whole squads to that area, and they're seaming in there for hours. And we can actually see that because we're actually surveilling the property at the same time they're still there. And we notice that that opens up a big problem, not only for that establishment itself where our officers there, but also for the city in general, because the calls come out around. And if somebody else needs help somewhere else, we're seaming at that property. So yes.
Is it your professional opinion that nothing short of revoking this license will resolve this situation?
We've been explaining to him since 2022 on this, and we're here in 2025.
Is there anything else the council should know about your experiences with this establishment?
There's more outcry now. We've done everything. We have arrested everybody. We charged, you know, it's the alcohol sales, the continuous problems and issues, they're still there.
What you mean that you arrested everybody?
Well, we arrested individuals in reference to off this property as police officers. When they're in violation, our patrol officers have arrested people with drugs on the property. We have open cases that we had of investigation, but we also had shootings there as well. So as a city of Mobile, we have arrested individuals there at that property.
So patrons and employees?
Correct, yes.
Are these arrests over and over? Are these individuals being arrested over and over, or is it a one-time thing in your recollection?
In my recollection, there's a lot of one-time things.
So they're not the same people that you're arresting over and over?
No, no.
Okay. Anything else, Lieutenant Saunders?
No.
Okay, Lieutenant Saunders, I do have one more question. With the other businesses that are in the area, have y'all looked into those businesses to see if they're really the problem instead of Fat Tuesdays?
Actually, I actually took Mr. Johnson, and I actually looked into the property next to him to see if they was in violation of sorts. We monitored that property after I speak to Mr. Johnson. I noticed that they closed down their establishment around two-ish, and whereas his clientele actually picks up around that timeframe. But I did take the ABC Board to that establishment too as well, and there was probably like three patrons inside the establishment, and they were cited because they were still in violation because they were still drinking alcohol. So the ABC Board actually cited them, but it was roughly around about two fifteen, two thirty, and it was about three patrons inside their property in that time.
Although you were there for drug-related activity, and you would have seen more inside where Lieutenant Hardeman would have seen more of what was going on outside, are you seeing the same thing with your research, the calls, the service, the search warrants, the control buys, the ABC Board? Are you seeing the same thing? Are you seeing overcrowded situations?
I do see overcrowded situations, but the patrol aspect gets way more than I do. But as we work as undercover capacity, we can actually go in and actually see, and we see open violations. We see open state charges that are actually being violated openly, and it's causing concerns.
Lieutenant, do you recognize the marijuana? Do you smell it burning?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever walked into that establishment and not smelled marijuana burning?
I have not.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned the bartender selling. Was that person arrested then?
Has not at this time.
Okay. Is it a reason why that arrest wasn't taken?
Yes, and I can explain to you why. We have open, we have an open investigation somewhere else, and the disclosure of that confidential informant would be displayed, and I have a bigger situation going on than this one right now. So I need to handle that before I can handle this.
Does the ABC Board have the right to suspend a liquor license?
Do they have the right? That would be a question for the ABC Board.
Okay. When it comes to the capacity of the building, when you go inside and you notice, because you have undercover people and they see that it's over capacity, do they have a right to not go call and say, "Hey, they're over capacity"? Call the Fire Marshal?
For my units and whatnot? When we do investigations, we tend to come and go, and we allow the establishment. We don't want to be noticed that we're there. So anytime that we come, when we call or whatnot, now, if there's a danger inside, yes, I can call the patrol officers and come and so forth. But we want to make sure that we're in and out undercover.
Thank you.
Mr. President? It's gonna be Ms. Gregory, then Mr. Woods. Oh, I'm sorry. Attorney.
We'll let him go.
Yeah, attorney, yeah. Thank you. I think for the record, since we've clearly gone over our time limits, that the council needs to vote to waive the time limits on this particular public hearing because of everything that's involved in it. Just on the record, since we have gone over the established time limits by our rules. So moves.
Second?
I'll move in second in a discussion, and it's just a time limit on this particular party. Correct. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Vice.
Yes. While you are still at the podium, both of our- Yes, while you are still at the podium, both of our witnesses have said that they have been making calls and arrests and going to this particular establishment for years. So I think with everyone here listening, the question probably is, why has this taken so long to come about and come to us to revoke the business license? And I, and I know there's a process, but I think we need an explanation of why it has taken so long.
Madam Vice President, first, I first heard about this in May of twenty twenty-five, May, late May, early June. At that point, we started looking into the past and created, did an investigation on the property. And this is a culmination of that investigation and what we found out with looking at it. So it's, in my point of view, I first heard about it about six months ago.
Okay, so you all have just been dealing with this for, for years. And business as usual, dealing with what you saw as issues at the establishment. Until now.
For myself, for myself, I just got back to, you know, SIS or Special Investigations.
Yeah, I understand. And of course Lieutenant Hardeman as well has been dealing with this for, for many years. Correct? Yeah.
And all the council members?
I've just got one question. Normally, establishment owners hire security. And a lot of times in clubs like this, the security that's hired are off-duty police officers. The question is, is do we know if any of the security that was provided here were off-duty secure, off-duty police officers?
Yes, and Officer Hardeman, we have him come back down. Officer Hardeman has explained to me that he has found off-duty police officers that were.
Can you get a little bit closer to the mic? Can you get it a little bit closer to the mic?
The off-duty police officers aren't allowed to go into the business. They're not bouncers or anything of that nature. So they would be more along the line of crowd control outside.
Well, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carroll.
So there were off-duty police officers outside?
Yes, sir. Sometimes there are, sometimes there aren't. Most nights, the off-duty officers, when they show up, don't show up until after the liquor sales are supposed to have stopped. I've spoken to the off-duty officers that are there, I've tried to explain to them. And their response is, we're responsible for this parking lot. We're not responsible for that parking lot, or that parking lot, or that parking down the street. And my response to them is, if you're working here and this place is creating those problems, you're absolutely responsible for those problems. But the agreement that they have with the owner is they are responsible for their property. And again, like she said, the off-duty officers, when we're employed in an off-duty capacity at a bar, we are not allowed to be inside the bar unless a situation occurs that, that necessitates a, a police response. Shooting, stabbing, assault, something like that. We handle the outside. We're not allowed to act as bouncers, check IDs, wind people, pat people down before they go in, that kind of stuff. We are there as a presence and as a deterrent.
Presence only, deterrent. So there's no police authority to regulate any type of visualized problems that were in the parking lot?
Yes, sir. They, they do have that authority to do that. But they're, the officers are looking at it because they're directed by the owner that it's a limited scope.
Again, as a duly sworn officer, officer has the responsibility
I agree with you, sir.
of anything beyond that parking lot that presents a problem.
Yes, sir.
So my question is, is did we do anything to cure the problem?
The, the people who those officers work for, they have been made aware of it. What has happened with that, I do not know.
Does the off-duty, when they off-duty, are they in uniform?
Yes, sir.
In a police vehicle?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, on October, on August thirty-first, the shooting that occurred at there, one of the vehicles that was struck was a police car.
My last question is, if they were duly sworn and responsible for curing the situation, then why didn't we do it? If they saw it?
Because, like I said, a lot of times they, when they get there, it's already out of hand. And the one or two officers, they're not supposed to be there one at a time. I've seen that. There's supposed to always be two at minimum. But there's not enough officers there to handle the situation.
So in essence, the owner did not provide enough security for the problems that he had?
No, sir, he has not.
I have one last question. And I don't know if you all can answer this one actually, but if we were to vote to revoke the business license, what happens to the property? Because what we have seen in many instances around the city, one club closes, another one opens, and we have the same issues going on because of the location. So I don't know if the current establishment owner owns the actual ground itself, or if they're leasing property, or, or what the issue is. But I would just be curious to know what happens in the future.
And Ms. Gregory, I've, I have seen that issue at other clubs. The ownership is the one that has to take responsibility. Like Lieutenant Saunders said, there is, there's another establishment that actually shares, like, it's like a duplex. We don't have problems at the one next door. So the management and the owners, they're not doing things they're not supposed to do. So the problems aren't there. It, it's at the same, almost the same location, they share a parking lot. We don't have the problems there that we have here. It's the management, the owners. That's what creates the problem. When you allow the element to hang out there when they're not supposed to be there, that's when you have these issues.
Another thing, the bouncers that are hired are supposed to check when the legal substance comes into the business. The contravent, the legal contravent comes into the business. So there's, if they are stopping them at the door, then when we come in undercover, we should see these items openly out. And if the manager is there and he's present and he's walking around seeing these items out, they're responsible for, are they not?
Yeah, but at least another question, if the security is hired, there's mobile police department and they're at the door, then.
Then we're not at the door, the bouncers are at the door.
Okay, so we're just in the parking lot? That's it?
So we, we control the parking lot, and I did surveillance, so the parking lot. The cars that are surrounding the police vehicles, they're in compliance. Now, how they're instructed or what job they have to do or protect or whatnot, I'm not sure because I don't know their contract. I don't know what they're hired to do or what they're done or for. But, and that's what we're trying to say is, regardless of their situation or how they're hired or how they're paid, we have no, nothing to do with that portion.
And Mr. Carroll, if you remember, you were out there speaking to one of the complainants. The cars that are parked across the street, they're down the street, they're in front of people's houses, driveways, and parked everywhere, anywhere they can find a place within that area, within like a two-block radius.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment, that comment. I'm just trying to make sure there's a clear understanding of all the elements that are at play here.
So if he would have purchased or had an officer sit across the street and pay the officer, make sure nobody parks over there, the officer would have done that job. If he would have paid somebody to go up Dunbar Street and not allow people to park on Dunbar Street in front of residents, that officer would have did his job. But those contracts and agreements and that things, he's been told that over three years. Those are possibilities of things to do. We're, as city or workers, are in control, just have to do this because of the club.
I just, my one question was, is that with his contract in place with the MPD officers that were on site, does that alleviate them of their sworn duty beyond their contract? So your statement was, if he had to put that in his contract, they would have been up the street or on the other street or across the street. But in my mind, because we're duly sworn, just because we have a contract for that parking lot, it doesn't alleviate us of that other responsibility also. Or does it not?
It, it, at times, it does not. It's just like, if I'm hired to work, if I'm hired to work at the establishment next door and my, and I'm designated to that manager of that establishment, if there's a shooting next door, yes, I'm going to go next door because it's a shooting. But because he is a, a person that is over here at this establishment that is violating or, or something, I'm still tied to this particular person for safety. And I have to make sure that I stay with my establishment for safety and control. I can't just wander off. I'd be leaving my assignment, if that makes any sense.
If, if I may, it's like, if I'm hired to work security at Walmart and someone comes and says, hey, they're parking illegally at Lowe's, I'm gonna call and have an on-duty officer respond to Lowe's because Lowe's is not my area of responsibility. If I'm working at Walmart and someone comes out and says, hey, there's a vehicle parked out here in a handicap parking place and they don't have a handicap placard, I can go out there and issue that citation because I'm a sworn law enforcement officer and I can write that ticket. I can take enforcement action where I'm assigned. I can take enforcement action if I'm outside of that area, but it's a smaller, limited area. And it depends on the severity of the crime in which I'm being told about.
Any further questions for the officer?
And for the council members? All right, all right, thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Josh Briskman. I'm a practicing lawyer here in Mobile, Alabama. I have the great honor and privilege to represent Mr. Johnson, Mr. King, and the bar known as Fat Tuesdays that's at issue today. The first thing I want the council to be aware of is that this bar has been in active business and a contributing member to this community for over fifteen years. And only recently have we run into problems that we've heard about today. I respect the officers that testified greatly. I know one of them from my work previously. There are some things that they mentioned that I think you need to listen to. And that is that a lot of the things they said were a little vague in terms of time, place, and how they actually occurred. What you heard was that many of these incidents occur off-site from the bar. My client is a private business person. He cannot control what people do off-site. You heard about at various times, a hundred calls, two hundred calls, three hundred calls. I haven't seen a record of any of those today. I haven't seen any video of this marijuana smoking allegedly going on in the bar. I will tell you, there is no criminal charge pending against this woman that the officer mentioned. And I think there's a very good reason for that. I don't think the charge would be merited. We emphatically deny drug use and drug sale at this business. It has not occurred. And you have seen no evidence of that other than hearsay allegations from officers. No charges to sustain same. And I think that that is quite a message to the council, if in fact that is the case. That being said, those calls that were made, I ask the council to look at where they originated. I think the vast majority of the calls you will find originated in this gentleman and his management team, who have gone to great efforts to deal with a security situation that is candidly not of their own making. And we do not try to escape responsibility by saying that. We have hired five security officers who are there every night. We have three off-duty police officers who are there on the weekends because that's when the crowds come. We are open later. We have been cited one time by the ABC Board for distributing alcohol after hours, slightly after two AM. One time. One time. We are here to ask you to not revoke the license. And we are here for a third time, not before this council, but to city members, to ask for help. We do not have unruly patrons in our bar. We do not allow that. However, it is an after-hours establishment. And there are mostly underage people who gather around the area off our property. We have contacted public safety director, had a meeting with him to express our concern about this. This is why we've hired the security we've hired. This is why we have off-duty MPD officers there. Our property is secure, but we have had problems with people off-site. We have called MPD, yes, literally hundreds of times, to try to disperse them or get them to come down. Oftentimes, Fat Tuesdays calls go unanswered. The off-duty police officers could act, but their job is to secure the club and their own private duty at that time. We would love them to do more, but it's an awkward situation for them. That's why MPD has been called when off-site incidents have occurred. I think you heard the police officer say, he's out there at one thirty in the morning before anything happens, apparently. And that that's when an incident happened across the street. I would ask the council to look at the origination of the calls. Where are they really coming from? And where are the incidents actually occurring? My client's bar holds a maximum of sixty-five people. That does not explain the parking situation, except for the fact that these people are not actually in the bar, but are in an adjacent location where a food truck operates late at night. I have here two petitions. One from immediate neighbors of the bar. These people all live directly behind the bar. They're asking you to keep the bar in place. These are friends and customers of the bar. They're asking you to keep the bar in place. These people are there. They live there, and they're asking you not to revoke the license. All we're asking is for a fair hearing and for you to consider all the evidence that you've really heard. How much evidence has really been presented to show, other than what people have said, that there's actually criminal activity?
Council, can I get a vote to stand this attorney time?
So moves. Second.
I'll be moving second in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
No, no, no. Go ahead, finish.
Oh, I appreciate it, sir.
Took you times away.
Thank you, you voted for me, I apologize. I was confused. But my point, I think, has been well made at this point, and I do appreciate the additional time. My client wants to operate legitimately and lawfully like they have for fifteen years, a contributing revenue source to the city of Mobile. If we could get the city's help in alleviating the crowd problem, which is off-site, there would not be any problems. And we've tried to work with police about that, and there just seems to be a very big communication issue in that regard. So we ask you to not suspend the license. Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If so, you might come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning. My name is Belinda Perryman, and I live directly behind the club. So I had no idea that the policeman and undercover police, I had no idea about none of that. And if his club stay open, it's gonna continue to be a mess. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I was gonna, wasn't gonna say very much, but Ms. Perryman, thank you for coming down. I've spoken to you, I guess, on quite a few times, I guess, here now. As most of you know, as a representative for that district, I get quite a few text messages, phone calls, and notices about the things that happen in our district, especially when it's bothering people. I just took a minute to open up my cell phone and take a look back over the last three years of just texts that I've saved from very complainants. I've reached out to the owner of the establishment myself and had various conversations about what he could do in order to be a great community partner over, over time. Have made suggestions myself. But I just want the citizens of this district to know that there are several text messages, videos, and other things that have been sent to me at, this one's at two seventeen AM, there's another one at. 3:13 a.m., 9:24 in the morning, Sunday. And there are countless others that have come in over the last year, year and a half, where I had the responsibility of forwarding those over to the administration for the administration to take action on and to reach out and try to have the administration and the mayor's office resolve whatever issues that they were with between the community and the club. Now, I have to say this, is that Rich, as we call him, has been a good community partner in so many ways. He's got a lot of give-back in a lot of places that are kind of unusual to everybody else. So many people in the community know him as the Two-Dollar Man. I don't know if you know him by that, where he comes in and he graciously puts two dollars all over the place and gives money to people and supports people everywhere else. And he does a lot of other things. And he owns not just this establishment, but other establishments and another wing place in the city, and he tries to be a community partner. But we have to remember that in being a community partner, that just doesn't mean that you're a community partner in one spot, but in all spots, in that you have to be wholeheartedly invested in the community and also with the citizens, the neighbors that are about you. So I don't know where the counsel's gonna go on this right now. You know, I'm curious legally if there's other measures that can be taken, partial measures that can be done to ask for cure over time, or if we just need to just totally clean this up. I remember back in time when this club was called 1608, we had to deal with this once before. And at that time, the club was closed down. It was under a different management, a different manager and a different owner at that time, who bought the old place and renovated it and turned it into 1608. But now it seems that we've almost made the same full circle and have to go about the same things that we did all those years ago. So I'm curious as if there's multiple things that we could possibly do to be maybe beneficial to both parties, or if this is one of those incidents where we just have to change it all.
Come back to the mic.
Well, for me, I still work, and I don't want it in my neighborhood. Where he got the petitions from is the peoples across the street from me. They are young, and that's what they like. I've been there all my life, and yes, it has been closed down once before. And I live in a, it used to be a respectable neighborhood. And I intend for it to stay that way. Would you want it in your neighborhood? Would you want it in yours? Would you want it in yours? No. I don't like all of that kind of stuff. I have nothing against clubs going. I do not. But it's the delivery that makes it bad. And I get it. Maybe he is a nice guy. I don't know him.
Just go ahead.
I don't. All I know is that the club is really bad. That's all I know. No.
All right, just go ahead. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd ask that we ask each party to place those written sort of documents. I think the gentleman had some petitions. I think the PD and city attorneys have some items. I'd ask that both parties introduce those to the clerks so they could be considered for the record.
Is any one else present that would like to address the counsel on this particular item?
Good morning. It's Sabrina Mas. I too would like to say something. I know Rick as well. If I'm not mistaken, I believe, if I may ask him a question. Rick, don't you own the club on Horsmills Road? Okay, because I live near Horsmills Road, and I'm not sure the name of it. I think it was called The New Spot. Is it still The New Spot? Okay. So there's something going on over there at this Fat Tuesday, what have you. I'm not sure. But he's owned that spot on Horsmills Road for two, what, three, four years? And it's very, and it's, it gets crowded over there on the weekends. And it's not ever a problem in that area, in that, you know, right there on Pillars and Valley and Horsmills Road. So I'm not sure about what's going on at that establishment. But my next thing, so Rick does do a lot for the community. I will say that. And he's always been very cordial, even when I went to get wings at his spot. So I want to say this. Is there, are the businesses that they stand there gathering in, do they have any, no trespassing signs posted, anything that's alerting the crowd that you can't be on our location, our spot, our, you know, our property? Are there any signs by the business owners stating no trespassing? Because it seems like if it's not happening at his club directly, the shootings, the assaults, or what have you, because it seems like that's the whole, that's the concern that I have, is a citizen's shootings and assaults. But if it's not happening directly at his location, and it's happening across the street or at the other businesses, then the business owners seem like they need to post something as well, saying no trespassing. And if there is trespassing, once they post these signs in the windows, the, something showing visible, then the police can then have a right to arrest people at that point. But that's like saying if something happens across the street at my neighbor's, and I have a party, but they're acting a fool over there at my neighbor's gathering, it's my fault. So I'm not, I'm not really quite sure as a citizen about shutting a business down if they're not directly at fault of what's happening around them or across from them. That, that's not, no, that's not, that's not what it is.
Again, there's no talking from the audience. If you need to talk, please step outside of atrium.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
I do recall, I think Lieutenant Hardeman possibly saying that business owners were complaining about patrons parking in their parking lot. I don't know whether they have no parking signs or not.
Ma'am, there's a business, like I said, that's next door. It's like a duplex, the two businesses.
Across the street.
Yeah, there's Tony's Gas Station, or Tony's Quick Stop is across the street. That business has complained about the trash in the parking lot. It's a gas station. It's a convenience store. It's, they go, they park over there. Once they start parking in there, you can't get another car in there. Sometimes the driveway's blocked. People in there can't get out. I want to say there are no lauding signs in there. It's not that they hang out in that parking lot, but that's where they park, go to the club. And they park as far down as the bridge right by Women's and Children's Hospital. They park all the way down Lambert Street. They park all through the neighborhood on Dunbar Street. They park all the way up, not quite to Catherine Street, going up St. Stevens Road. So it's like a spider web. This is the middle of the spider web, but things get caught in the edges, too. But if the spider wasn't there, the web wouldn't be there.
So they're parking on the rightsways, all down the streets, and then in a private business parking lot. Whether or not there's a no parking sign or not, it is a private business, correct?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Gregory, to your no parking signs. I requested no parking signs around Ms. Perryman's house. The city put the signs up, but somehow they disappeared. They're no longer there. I drove over last week, over the last couple of weeks, just to take around and see what was happening back there, but the sign's no longer there.
And if I could address real quick, please. The attorney that came up here said a bunch of underage kids. In my experience up there, I have not seen anyone underage out there. These are all people who are illegal to be there. If it was an underage issue, we would be dealing with that as well. As far as the drug arrests at the location, my officers have made drug arrests in the parking lot of that location. When I'm there, you almost get a contact high just being there, from the smell of the burning marijuana. You don't see it because they're obviously smart enough, but it's just, the aroma is overwhelming. Also, like I said, the people park in the businesses across the street. They park down the street. They're always walking back and forth. That is where they're going. Usually, on a Sunday morning, late Saturday night, there is a line of people waiting to get inside. And you'll see them go, want to come in, want to go out, want to come in, want to go out. When I called the fire marshal up there, there were probably a hundred and fifty people inside the business that night. Capacity sixty-five. So like I said, it's like a spider web, and without the spider in the middle of the web, the web wouldn't be there.
All right, thank you. Is any one else present that would like to address the counsel on this particular said item? If so, if you might come down and state your name.
Good morning, council president, small, other council. My name is Chandra Ladue. I am a retiree from Norwood County Metro Jail after twenty-one-plus years. I have to stand here and speak on behalf of a young man that I've known over fifty-five years. What I'd like to say is, I can't sit here and listen to all this stuff that has been said because I once bartended there. I understand there are some problems, but I pray that we can alleviate them because we don't need our business closed. When I say "our," because he's a community person. He does for the community. I've worked with him on the Thanksgiving giveaways, the Easter egg hunt, and everything. When the young lady behind said that, you know, they want it closed, I'm sixty-seven years old. I've been going there all my life. Never had a problem. Yeah, things may happen after hours, but if there's something that can be rectified or he has a certain time to close up, I can understand that. But from 2022, I've worked there and still go there. And I know for a fact that everything that happened with him has happened in the parking lot, where there's really no control. I've gone through there. Am I there that late? No. But as a retiree, I can attend any type situation that I like or whatever. But I am anti-drug, always have been, because I don't like the way it kills and it steals and destroys people's lives. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother. And if I'm comfortable going there in the afternoons when we have little gatherings or whatever, I don't partake in drug activity. None of it. I consider myself to be an upstanding citizen. I've served as superintendent of my Sunday school at my church, where I attend Emmanuel AME, and I am very proud of that. But to just say that these incidents are all happening in the club, that's not true. Because most of them that happen are down the street. The last incident that happened back in August, my understanding, the patron, whoever it was, was down the street. There's Brandon's right next door to the club. The shooting was at, almost at the health department, and they shot back. That's when the vehicle was shot. But do I condone violence? No. But the fact of it is, I would just like to see him given a chance to rectify some of the problems that we're having. Because as I say, I look forward to our Easter egg giveaway for the children. I look forward to serving the kids in the neighborhood, or the people that cannot afford a meal for themselves. And I just wanted to get up and just speak on that behalf. Because although I've worked at the jail for twenty-one, twenty-two years, I don't forget where I came from. And this young man here has helped me watch my children grow up, as well as all his nieces and nephews. So that is all I would like to ask is that, can we please rectify this? And don't close another one of our businesses in our area. Thank you.
Is any one else present that would like to address the counsel on this particular said item? Is any one else present? All right. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 610 Pettit Avenue, 507 Booker Street, 962 Government Street, and 1551 Kellogg Street. Public nuisance is in ordering them demolished or secured.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is any one else present that would like to address the counsel on these items? And again, it's only the housing for public nuisance and order it on Pettit, Booker Street, Government Street, and Kellogg Street. If so, come down to the podium, give us your name and the address that you're coming down for.
Keisha Burks, 1312 Dauphin Street. I'd like to address the counsel on 962 Government Street.
Okay.
I was told that this was to be demolished, and so I was coming initially to discuss, to just give some information about the property. But I see now that it's on the agenda just to secure the property. So I just wanted you to be aware, I guess, that I have a letter from an inspector, an outside inspector that we had come in and do an inspection of the property, an engineer. And the engineer has declared the property that it is secure, that it is stable, and gave us instructions on what would need to be done to repair the property, to keep it in a stable condition. And so we're in the process of getting a permit for that right now. I have to have a survey done to get a certificate of elevation, to get that permit. I have a permit through the historic department, but the building department says they need this other survey done. So I'm working on that. And the property is actually up for sale right now. So if we're, when we're able to secure that permit, it will be able to be transferred to the new owner. We do have the property secured as far as the entire property itself. It has a construction fence that is around and a chain link fence with locks as well.
Mr. Carrigan.
Do you represent Jesse Burks in QPSI?
I am actually the owner of the property.
So you bought it from, it's my understanding that Jesse Burks owns the property.
I'm Keisha Burks. I actually own the property myself.
So you represent Jesse Burks in QPSI then? Yes. You?
No, I represent myself. I actually own the property. Keisha Burks is who owns the property. I own the property myself, yes.
Well, so you're telling us that you're gonna stabilize the property and that you're gonna secure it, and the city has, does not have the responsibility of doing that now? And you guys are gonna go through the process and handle everything?
Yeah, we have the permits in place, and we're working on, like I said, I am working on the permit right now, getting that permit. I have an email that says your permit will be approved as soon as you have your certificate of elevation.
I just don't see David in here to confirm all that, but that's fine. The, there's another concern. You said that your construction fence is secure. I pass that property four times a day, sometimes twice at night. There's constantly someone behind that fence.
You've seen people? I've never, I've...
I've seen people behind that fence.
I've never seen anyone behind that fence, so we do check it daily.
Especially when your dumpster was at the butt end of the fence. They could lift that fence up at the latch and then put it back down and sleep next to that dumpster and then come right out in the morning. You guys might want to check that as you go by. Those temporary construction fences are not locked at the edges, and they're easily pulled up and get inside and get back out. We all know that as contractors, I've asked that you guys check that if you're gonna leave it that way. If you're gonna take care of it and make sure that it's secure and make sure it's finished and gonna make sure it's restored, that's fine. I was happy to see if a sale sign go up on the property. It's been derelict now for almost a year or longer. It's a nice piece, a nice place to have on Government Street. It's unfortunate that it's been sitting in this condition for so long. So as long as we're gonna restore it, not tear it down, I'm fine with that.
Absolutely. Like I said, you know, we do, we do check that property. We do maintain the yard and that kind of thing. And we haven't had any reports of anyone being within the building or on that property. And so that's, that's new to me, that I know of anyone being on the property at all.
Yeah, I've just seen him sleep beside that dumpster. Like I said, I go by there quite a bit.
Right, right. As, yes, we live right nearby, and so we do, we do.
I know right where you are on Dauphin Street.
Yeah, yeah.
I know right where you are. Know right where you were in the center of Oakley. Jesse used to work for, so I know him personally.
Right, right.
And I know what he's capable of, too, so I'd like to see you guys get this done.
Yes, absolutely.
No, we'll lay it over sixty days and give it enough time to get it together. And if at the end of sixty days that it's not done, then I won't be here. But by record today, at the end of sixty days, if it's not done, then I ask the city to immediately take act- to immediately take action, secure it, and then force lien on the property.
Um, I just have one question, I guess, about that as far as securing, because you're saying, like, the construction fence is not enough to be secure. We have been.
For me, I think that needs to be a, a, a legal answer, but secure for me means to secure the property itself to prevent harm and danger. Construction fences, a lot of times, people, like I told you, it's easy to get in and out. It's just to prevent people from coming in and out during the process of construction. When I say secure and stabilize, I'm talking about the structure still.
And Mr. David Docklebar is right behind you, and he can finish answering the, answering the question that you, that you have to ask and everything.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is any one of us present that would like to address the council on these items?
My name is Catherine Flowers. I live at 922 Conta Street, right behind the property. And one problem I have is there seems to be a disconnect between some people that own property and are allowed to sit for nine years next to me. The Conta Street houses never got fined, never anything done, and they have been fined, and they have answered the count, the city's, you know, problems with them and done what they did, and now they're trying to sell it. And we don't need another place on Government Street to put in probably, because I'm sure, I hadn't looked at the zoning, I'm sure it's, um, commercial. We don't need a gas station, we don't need a, um, bank with a drive-through. We need government to have living. More and more people are moving downtown. The Antoinette was fixed up. We've been in our house for eighteen years. When I moved in, it was derelict. Somebody can fix this up. The structure is sound. It's made of wood that is, you don't build houses like that. I just, I'd hate to see, most of the commercial on Government was probably put in in the seventies. It's time for the City Council to look at the zoning too, to get this property and, and others like the CBS rezoned, because we want living downtown. It's a gateway to the downtown. So I ask you that you give them time to sell it. I, I sat for nine years with derelict property, and then they were allowed, after they finally lost with the ARB and told not to move the houses, y'all allowed them another year and a half before they even started work on it. So I think you ought to allow more than sixty days.
Well, Ms. Flowers.
Also, one other thing, I live there, and I'm Gladys Kravitz of the neighborhood, and I've never seen anybody inside it once they owned it. I, I mean, it's, it really quit when they put that fence around. People were not in it before that. It was a mess.
Oh, Ms. Flowers, this must be some misunderstanding, uh, on your part as to how the system works and your understanding and how government works. The government, or in this case, the city, is allowing sixty days for them to secure and stabilize the project. That means that they have to do that. If they don't do that, then we will do that, and then we will force lien against it if they don't, but they still will be allowed to sell the property. But they need to do something to make sure that the facility is secured and stabilized.
I understand that, but I sat next to derelict property for nine years.
Is any one of us present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Mobile Youth Council.
Good afternoon. I'm Fandel and Pierre. I'm representing the Drug Education Council on behalf of the Mobile City County Youth Council. We're here today to say thank you to each of you for supporting us one hundred percent. Our youth are very busy in the communities now. They're working with, uh, Red Ribbon coming up next month, and they also are planning a youth summit to be held on January the twenty-second, and this is going to be on youth activities that go on in our communities. So I wanted them to come and, that you could see them today and to say thank you, but they, I will let them introduce themselves, and I will leave this flyer for Ms. Carroll so that you all can come. We would love for you all to be a part of our youth summit. So if you all would come and introduce yourselves, that would be free.
Hi, my name is Morgan Carroll. I'm a senior at McGill Toolen, and I'm representing Councilman William Carroll.
Good afternoon. My name's Sam Hecker. I'm a senior at McGill Toolen, and I represent Joel Davis.
Good afternoon. I'm Braden Seidler, a junior from Davidson High School, and I'm representing Commissioner Connie Hudson.
Good afternoon. I'm Will Graham. I'm a sophomore at McGill, and I'm representing Councilman Ben Reynolds.
Good afternoon. My name is Connor Benfield. I'm a junior at Baker High School, and I represent Commissioner Randall Dooley.
Good morning. My name's Maggie Breenz. I'm a sophomore at EMS Wright, and I represent Councilman Josh Woods.
Good evening. I'm Casey Killam. I'm a junior at Mary G. Montgomery, and I represent Connie Hudson.
Also, we have many more, but a lot of them today are in school taking the, um, practice for the ACT. But again, I want to just say thank you and want you to support our youth council. Thank you so much.
Uh, good morning again, y'all, but hey, I guess y'all got one heck of an education this morning on drug education, right? And how the city, the city actually works. Uh, it's glad to see y'all down here today. Uh, very great, very big experience today in how things work and how the public hearing works, and especially with what you guys are doing with, uh, drug education in our city. So I look forward to a lot of you being youthful providers throughout the city for a long time to come. Uh, uh, that's, again, that's my daughter Morgan, y'all, I have to say that. A happy eighteenth birthday to you two. Uh, by the way, I expect you two seniors to go back to school. It's only twelve-thirty, all right? She's trying to get out of school, by the way, I wanted to say that. Will y'all miss, uh, Ms. Walsh, Ms. Carroll, go back to school, all right?
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much for coming down.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Congratulations to everyone on the youth council. Um, I had a senior that just graduated, um, and they're in college, so I do have an opening slot. So anybody in here that knows a ninth or tenth grader that, uh, would like to represent District One, they can send me an email at councilone@cityofmobile.org.
And I'm going to piggyback on that. We have sent information out on my newsletter and in my Facebook post asking for anybody who is interested. And Sam, I can't believe you're Joel Davis' representative. You live in my district, buddy. Yeah, well, since Joel won't be here very long, um, we might just want to transfer, we're, we're going to redistrict you to your correct district, but at any rate, I do have an opening if anybody is interested.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Danny Cordy.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council, Mayor Stimson and his staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Danny Cordy. I'm the Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority, and it's another beautiful day in the city of Mobile. And as your sports tourism arm for the city and county of Mobile, we at the MSA are proud to represent you as we continue to work to bring visiting sporting events to the Mobile area. We could not have achieved our recent successes without both your investment and your blessing. And for that, we want to thank you for the confidence you've shown in us. As for our annual scoreboard results for the recently completed fiscal twenty-five, which of course ended September thirtieth, the MSA attracted, supported, and/or hosted forty-one sports events, which generated an estimated thirty-seven point six million dollars to the Mobile area economy. Thirty-seven point six million dollars. So basically, in essence, for every dollar of public funds invested in what we do, forty-six dollars in local spending was generated. Those forty-one events spanned twenty-one different sports involving all age brackets, which included everything from cross-country and gymnastic meets to volleyball, basketball, football, baseball, soccer, softball, lacrosse, and yes, our annual turkey calling championships and pole vaulting competition down Dauphin Street, plus many more. Of those forty-one total events, fifteen were either first or second-time events from Mobile, with twenty-eight of the forty-one being youth-oriented, defined as participants under twenty years old. And as I mentioned before, these youth, youth events are sort of the gold standard of the sports event industry, as they typically bring more visitors to town when, when those, when those events happen. Also, as a brief recap, from last week's Eighth Annual Gulf Coast Challenge powered by the Mobile Sports Authority, which featured the Alabama A&M Bulldogs hosting the Jackson State Tigers at Ladd People's Stadium, we drew about fourteen thousand at Ladd. Fans enjoyed a full week of fun, uh, Mardi Gras-style game day parade, tailgating, and the game itself, won by Jackson State. In the previous seven Gulf Coast Challenge games, we estimate that sixty thousand visitors have come through Mobile, which generated an estimated economic impact of about thirty-nine million dollars to our local economy by this single event. And as for twenty-six, we have at least twenty-nine more sports events planned, and of course, we're very excited to be hosting for the first time next year the AHSEA Super Seven Football Championships in the first week of December twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth. And again, your investment in us has made it possible, as we market our unique area, to those visiting regional and national event owners, as well as helping to create, grow, and support our own homegrown events. So we'd like to thank you again for all your support. Please feel free to visit our website, mobilesportsauthority.com, or contact us if you have any questions or suggestions. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Uh, and the questions or comments from this council?
Thank you, Danny, and, and to the board. I know y'all work hard. I, I've had this idea on my mind, just maybe we should talk about it offline, but the city has a golf course, that is a city golf course, and the county is going to have a golf course at Cypress Creek. I think there's a competitive opportunity that maybe we could work out between maybe county golfers versus city golfers, uh, and, and come up with something, so I'd love to talk to you about that.
With prize money and everything, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you know. Not, not necessarily, I'm, I'm maybe the youth of, of each, you know, work something.
No, we'd love to. Competition is always great.
That's right.
Also, I'd like to say, uh, one of my board members, Donnie Brown, is here, so I wanted to say thank you for Donnie coming down, so thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for all you that you do, Mr. Cordy. Madam Clerk.
Maxine Walters.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Maxine Walters, and, um, I am an attorney here in Mobile, and I'm also founder of Reaching the Bar, which is a legal pipeline program and nonprofit here in Mobile. Uh, and so, uh, one thing I wanted to tell you about is our program, and then read to you some things that some of my students wrote. So, um, we, this is the fifth year of the program, and we meet, um, weekly in the fall. So I go to Blunt and Williamson High Schools, um, and we have different legal topics, we have guest speakers, and then, um, about a month or so into it, we start working on our mock trial, which we have annually at the Government Plaza here in the ceremonial courtroom. So this year, it's going to be December fifth, and it'll be, um, pretty much up until like one o'clock. So, um, one of the lessons that we had this year was talking about the Zogby Act, the mayor and the city council, and they got to watch part of a city council meeting and see how people come up to the podium, and they get to, um, address you as members of the community. And so I had them write letters to you all that I will, um, hand over at the end, but I wanted to read a few of them during the time that I have. So Ms. Jasmine Jones from Blunt High School, um, one of her biggest concerns is the lack of affordable housing and shelters, and, um, she, um, and I, I did tell them that, um, you all can't fix all of these problems, but it's important for you all to be aware of their concerns. So she would, um, love to see some homes be renovated, to be turned into affordable housing or shelters. Jade Petway, Petaway from Williamson High School, um, she is a new driver, and she feels like the roads around where she lives are messed up, um, and that it's, it would help her be a safer driver if she felt that the roads were safe. Natalie Gibson from Maddie T. Blunt High School, um, talked about the lack of sidewalks and how she often sees people walking home from school on the side of the road. Um, and she would like to see more sidewalks that connect neighborhoods to schools specifically, so that's safer for children to get home. Calicia Curtis from Blunt High School talked about how a lot of people are scared to take their kids to the parks anymore because of public safety issues. Um, and several students noted in their letters that they would like to see more police presence. Amari Petway from Blunt High School would like to see gun safety programs be introduced to our youth. If youth are going to have guns, at least they can be informed on how to have them safely. Um, Emmanuel Mack from Blunt High School would like to see, um, campus beautification projects, um, at the local schools. Um, Nyla Kyles from Blunt High School would like to see more training for youth and jobs, um, especially, um, the age range of thirteen to fifteen, because they feel like once they're able to get a job legally, they don't have the experience, and they're competing with other people, um, who have a lot more on their resume. And the last one is Cassius Priest, um, who said he would like to be able to walk to the store and not have to hug the curb. Um, he would like a bike lane so he can feel safe riding down the road. And his last request that he is, he would like to ask the community, he would like to ask you to grant his community the luxury of a sidewalk. So I just wanted to share those letters, and I will have the rest for you here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Maxine, um, for coming down and sharing that. Um, I had an opportunity actually this past, um, Saturday to speak at Blunt High School for their I League conference, and they shared similar concerns. Um, so being engaged with young people is very important and hearing their concerns. Um, I actually have convo with Corey on Tuesday, um, so if you have any young people that would like to come down, meet, um, they're welcome to do that.
I will. Thank you so much.
Rodney Tumer.
Get my auction voice ready. Come here. Good afternoon. My name is Rodney Tumer, twelve oh two Navaco Road. Everybody knows me as DJ Rarsky. I'd say a good morning to the president, vice president, city councilman, outgoing mayor, incoming mayor. Uh, my name is Rodney Tumer, uh, and for more than twenty-five years, I've dedicated my life to working with the youth of this city. I've mentored at-risk teens in our schools and recreation centers. I've organized community concerts and turned violence into unity. I've partnered with churches, nonprofits, small businesses to build programs that teach life skills, entrepreneurship, and creative arts. I've walked the same streets as the kids we talk about, not to judge them, but to guide them. I didn't read about Mobile youth from a report. I lived it with them. But today, we have to speak truth. It's no secret that the state of Alabama is building mega prisons scheduled to open up this May, a project costing over one billion dollars. In twenty-twenty-three, the governor also signed a permitless car carry law, even after law enforcement and community leaders warned against it. Those two decisions are connected. When you make it easier to flood our streets with guns and then build a billion-dollar prison, you're planning for incarceration, not prevention. And we all know who will fill those cells, young black men from cities like Mobile. That's not speculation. That's history repeating itself. The University of South Alabama twenty-twenty-one study proved that our neighborhoods already knew racial disparity in Mobile are deep and measurable in education, employment, housing, and in criminal justice system. Black teens here are more likely to be suspended, arrested, and locked out of opportunities than any other group. Those are facts. So the question before us is simple, will we keep funding the problem or will we finally invest in the solution? The solution that me, and I'm not saying by myself, because I work with children twelve day, twelve hours out of each day, from first grade to twelfth grade, and then I'm a detention officer at Strickland Youth Center. I went there and wanted to be there intentionally, so I could understand the psyche of our children, understand what's going on in our communities, of these underserved communities. My solution is a plan, is a two-year commitment to empower, educate, and employ our youth, especially those our, our system have failed. It's not charity, it's justice. So the core objective is to invest our youth program development, expand after-school mentorship, creative art programs in every district, create economic pathways, provide paid internships, trade certification, certification, excuse me, entrepreneurship training, to support mental health, place counselors and trauma-informed staff.
Excuse me one second. Counsel, can I stand here one minute?
Yes.
I've got one more minute.
To place counselors and trauma-informed staff in schools and violence, in schools and in the communities that could share the violence, to ensure accountability, publish quality reports, and create a com- community oversight committee, so every dollar and every decision is transparent and fair. Since I got to go through, I'm going to run through it real fast. Since I gotta go through, I'm gonna run through it real fast, because I don't have much time. This, investing in this accountability will, that we will measure this success by fifteen percent reduction in youth detention by 2027, a twenty-five percent increase in youth employment and training participation, full access to after-school programs in every district, higher school attendance and graduation rates transparency will be public and constant because trust is earned through proof. In closing, council members, we can't build billion-dollar prisons and then claim we can't afford a seven-million-dollar investment in our youth. We can't keep saying our children are the future of our budgeting as if they are expendable. The University of South Alabama study showed us the truth. The streets of Mobile show us the cost.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, it's, Counsel, uh-
Mr. Tumer, your time is up, but I have a question for you. You was about to share something. Can you tell me what that was, you was about to share? Can you finish that? There you go. That response?
Um-
Finish your statement.
That statement that you was-
The University of South Alabama?
Yeah, can you give me those, yeah, what?
University of South Alabama is already studied, it was a study approved by the University of South Alabama that proved that our neighborhoods already knew racial disparity in Mobile are deep and measurable. But other than that, I just want to say that I work with children every day. I drive through Mobile, because I work in all the communities. They are opportunity deserts. Our children, when they come home from school, they don't have nowhere to go. And when they go somewhere, when they go somewhere, it's underfunded, all they have is basketballs in the gym, and even if that, Taylor Park, thank God this man has been working for three years, they got the Taylor Park down, and they're about to build something beautiful there. But we have no contingency plan there for where these children are going to go until this place is built. Our children have nowhere to go in my community, underserved community. They have nowhere to go. When they get out of school, where they go? Go out and play, go out and play where? Our children don't even have time to titillate their minds to get excited about anything. You know I've been coming here for the last five years, and I appreciate you all, because you always are there for me. You always are there for us, so you know the plight. You know my loyalty is first to these children, and these young people first. They have nothing. I'm asking for this city council and this new mayor that's coming in to commit, to commit. And I talk commit, and I don't have meetings, because we have meetings, you have other meetings, they have other meetings, and it gets drawn out to the fire that we have when we first initiate this meeting is going out. We have tangibles here. I gave you tangibles. I didn't sit up there and play with nothing. I sat there for three weeks going over this. This is research, this is study, this is in-life experiences. I don't have no certificate. I don't have no master's degree in anything. I got a master's degree in real life with these children that I'm with every day, when the young men that are at Strickland Youth Center say, when they get out and they see me, can you get me a job? I don't have nothing else to tell them. When the first and second and third graders over at Taylor Park, when I'm going to leave here and go over there and be with them, they don't have nothing. We have to invest in these people. These are children. These are our children. How dare we do this? When we sit up here, seen us, when we sit there and we pledge allegiance for liberty and justice for all, for all, not a few?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Tumer, and, you know, I do agree with you at Taylor Park, and also Park and Recreation. I also do agree with you semi about Taylor Park, but the thing about is, the city owns the building at Taylor Park, but the intercity mission runs Taylor Park. So the city handles every tie at Taylor Park. Now, what the city would like to do at Taylor Park is implement some programs, not only for the children, but also for the seniors. But at the same time, they don't want to step on no toes over there, as you know, that, you know, and that's the city's standpoint is tied up right now. Also, if you look into the agenda, and it's over two-point-five million dollars, that's going to go for a new community center, especially off of Parkway. That area had been a desert for recreation for those kids down there for years. We got B.C. Rain, Pillins, and Gear Yard down there. The kids don't have nowhere to go. If you look at the city budget, you can put it online, the city has millions of dollars that they're putting towards, you know, youth programs between boys and girls clubs and et cetera. Now, the question is, you know, is the city throwing good money at the bad things? We are putting a million dollars. We don't have anything to do with the prisons. That's the state.
I understand that.
The state are building the billions of dollars. I wish they would take the billions of dollars and invest into the programs, but they're not.
I understand that.
And that's one thing that I do encourage you and others to do, is really contact the state legislators and the senators, and even the governor, and just tell them, hey, y'all need to put more money towards, you know, youth programs, because the city of Mobile is doing it.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
You know, I understand that. I understand how government works, but it's going to become a point that we all have to realize, we are in a state of emergency in Mobile. There's a war on these young people, and they can put them all brung together, and they call them savages. But nobody knows the backstory. Why is that child acting like that? Where did this child, where did the background, where did the backstory come from when this child was in abusive a home, a dysfunctional home with no love? I mean, we have to understand, the last time I came up here, I showed you a video of a young man. Three years ago, I came up here with thirty letters from thirty children at Taylor Park that said what they wanted, what they needed. I understand where the money's going to come, but if they can get a, if they can put our middle school, high school children in Williamson, and because they couldn't find a way that they can build us a school, but they come out with a world school and from private funds, I'm pretty sure if we don't want to invest, get these private partners and everybody to come in and assume a responsibility for us, for the city. We have to do better, man. I'm telling you, we are at war, and it's going to be a whole generation of children that are going to be going to prison, because some of them are just trying to beast away where they can feel like they belong, and that's on a city level.
And I do agree with you, and that's why I was stating earlier, if we throwing good money at the bad things, we need to know.
Yes.
Like I said, and one, you know, Ms. Keisha Brown, she's over Community Affairs. I mean, I ask you all just to work together, because again, we don't know everything. You know, the only thing I know is that the city is putting millions of dollars, you know, into the youth program, but the question is, is we throwing good money at the bad things, and if so, we need to know. Because again, we are spending money, but I don't want to keep putting money at the bad things, so if so, we need to really just sit down and say, hey, this is bad for our youth, but this is more functional for the youth and everything, where y'all spending the money at. But again, we, I ask you to get with Ms. Keisha Brown, we really just to sit down, we really need to know, especially before the next year's budget comes.
And that's why I ask that we should have an oversight committee from the community. And in this oversight committee that we deal in each district, anything that happens in our district, whether it's policing, whether it's anything that's happening, we need people in set in place that can make sure that that's for us, by us. You know, we have to have young, you have to have, you cannot do anything without young people at the table. These are the children, this is the future. You can't do nothing. It'd be impossible, because we as adults, we don't know everything. So we need to have an oversight committee for every community that's considered with youth leaders, clergy, advocates, and those people that in that community that know that community well, so when things happen in that community, and they all know what's going on, and they can be able to set in place what they want. And they can say, no, we don't need that. Yes, we do, but it's no oversight, and there's no checks and balances.
Mr. Tumer.
And if there's no check and balances, then that's where we get where we at now. Are they effective? Are they not effective? They are not effective.
Mr. Tumer, I want to thank you so much for coming down. What I can tell you what's going to happen in District One, you have my fullest support with a committee. Anybody with District One, your core opinion, we can have a meeting next week, you can be on that committee.
Yes.
For youth, let's start, let's start working, let's start putting together. I also commit not just talking, I'm putting discretionary funds. I have just, I read you have, you want to have this opportunity hub.
Yes.
I will put discretionary funds to go towards that right now. We get a letter, let's make it happen. Let's meet how we're going to use that discretionary funds. We have buildings in Tumerville, we can start.
Exactly.
Library, we can start at-
We don't have to build a new building.
We can start-
We have buildings in our community that have not been utilized that we can transform. That's what it's about, transforming lives, transforming buildings for us, and it's not going to cost that much.
So let's start, let's pilot the program.
I'm with you, brother.
And let's move forward, stop talking, and let's show that we can do it one place, and we can move and do it other places.
Thank you so much.
So if anybody here in this community is ready to do it, let's start together, and we can make it happen.
Thank you so much.
And I think that's how, that's how we have to show it.
Absolutely.
So, I'm ready.
Thank you, and I appreciate each and every one of you all up there. I really do, because I've come up here, and every time I come here, you've always been supportive. So let's do this. Let's stop talking, let's act before it's too late. Thank you.
Mr. President, good night.
Uh, Vice.
Oh, thank you for coming. I sure appreciate it.
Yes, I'm sure.
You have certainly given us a lot of information here, and I appreciate it. Just a few thoughts. One is a triage plan.
Yes.
We need triage.
Yes.
You don't move furniture when the house is burning.
Yes.
Also, we had a resiliency program a while back that was all about literature, education, that kind of thing. That's the hub for youth violence, all the different spokes you have talked about. I think that's something that you were, pretty much your plan works on that, so that's where we need to be.
Okay.
But I will also tell you that last week, I met another meeting, but I met with a pastor at a church in my district, who was very, his church is very involved in the community, and he asked me, what can we do? Where are the problems? What can we do? And I said, I would really love it if you all would open your doors in the afternoons to have kids in the community who have no place to go after school to come in and be mentored for their homework, and keep them for two to three hours before they go home, because kids need somewhere to go in between so that they're not out on the streets. And if you're agreeable to do this, we can pilot that and show other churches in every neighborhood that you too can do it.
Absolutely.
It takes volunteers to step up in each church.
Absolutely.
There are churches on every other corner in our city-
Yes, it is.
-who should be opening their doors to these kids who need a place to go and who need mentors to help them.
And that's-
If you don't, if you don't have youth sports or some other after-school, they need a place to go, and especially those churches that have gyms and other facilities, you know, for things like that. So he said he was very interested in doing it, and we'll be following back up with him to do this in my district. So that's, it's an idea to throw out that I would really like to see my colleagues embracing other districts.
I'm with you. If you need me, I just, I just want, I just don't want to just talk, and then we walk out of here, and then it just goes on and goes on, and then it goes on. I just want to tell you this real quick. I know it's time to go. Everybody's ready to go, but I fell in that trap when the crack law came out, conspiracy. I never sold dope in my life, but I was at a cousin's house, and my decision to make this, I dropped some drugs off, just dropped them off. I ain't getting no trouble. I just did it. It was, I was innocent. I didn't think the ramifications of it. I did it, and he got caught, and he told on thirty-three people, and guess who else he told on? Me. And I did seven years and four months in federal prison. Ain't never been in trouble in my life, so I'm telling you, there's no safety net no more. If you carry a gun and you brandish guns, these are the new laws, and I've been trying to educate these young people. I just want to educate them about the new laws. If they do it, if they decide I'm going to do it, that's on them, but they won't say that I didn't tell them. We didn't just, we didn't educate them about what's happening, because it made this new, this new place, this new mega prison opens up in Elmo County, four thousand beds, which is fifty, really eight thousand, because it's two men per cell. We need help. We need to educate these young people. We need to have a forum. We need to go in, if our city councilman, we need to have a town hall in the meeting so they can know what's going on, because it's about to happen. Thank you.
I, 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 no club of talking. Madam Clerk?
Nina Dorch. I have one for the mayor, too. Maybe can we get that too? Hello, everyone. My name is Nina Dorch. I'm coming to you today because I spoke to you all before in June about workforce development, and today I'm here again because urgency for this has not changed. Violence hasn't stopped, and opportunities for our citizens remain out of reach. Just last week, the Salvation Army, their Angel Tree Program for Mobile County fielded in less than twenty-four hours. Yet Baldwin County, they're still open and accepting applications. This should tell us something. Our citizens right here in our area are struggling months before a holiday. This isn't just about low-wage workers either, because I've heard from people working two or three jobs who still can't make ends meet. I've spoken to residents with a PhD, someone with a JD, years of experience in HR, logistics backgrounds, hospitality, leadership experience, all searching for stable work right here in our city. At first, I proposed to you having a workforce development department. Then I reduced it to a committee and said, can we at least have a job fair? Nothing. And to me, that just shows when we do things like that, that we want our citizens to thrive. We want them to know about all of the industries that are here that we talk about, and we celebrate, and we incentivize so much. Hosting a city-led job fair matters because it addresses multiple gaps in our community. First, it bridges the access gap. Many citizens don't know who's hiring, how to connect. The city can create a centralized hub linking residents directly with employers. We have countless facilities and companies that Mobileians pass by every day, not knowing what they do or how the jobs are available. We need to educate our citizens while showing industries that the city of Mobile is their partner in building a strong workforce. When they grow, we all grow. I have a few more points here, but I know I'm not going to make it, so I'm just going to tell you this. When our citizens earn, they spend locally. That means more dollars going through our small businesses, our schools, our housing marker, market, and stronger tax base for the city. It strengthens the city's branding and retention. Working-class citizens are the best ambassadors for the city of Mobile. When they thrive, they tell their friends, they tell their relatives, they tell their family. Not only do you want to come here and play, you want to come here and work, you want to come here and live, and you want to come here and invest. A city-led job fair will align recent economic growth. The mayor just talked about the port becoming one of the largest in the city, and aerospace and a new facility.
Counsel, can I stand here one more minute? One more minute, start.
I'm sorry, this bothers you all, but it bothers me to have phone calls, and I don't even work locally. But if we don't connect Mobileians to these roles, we miss the chance for our citizens to benefit from the growth that we've helped fund. This is not a massive undertaking. Cities like Birmingham, Savannah, New Orleans, Charlotte, all host bi-annual or even annual job fairs, connecting thousands of representatives and citizens to opportunities. All I'm saying is that we need to make sure that our citizens understand the opportunities that are right here for them.
Mr.-
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Penn?
You know, I agree that we have, you know, you have the port of Mobile, which is a billion-dollar industry. We have also, we have Airbus. We have all these different type of companies here, and how many young people know about these different jobs? I grew up in Mobile. I didn't know nothing about no tugboat, right, and how much money a tugboat driver makes. Y'all know how much tugboat driver makes?
Six figures.
Man, that's a lot of money. I might would have been a tugboat driver. Like, seriously, like, we don't know about these opportunities, and I think we need to start holding the people who, the businesses here accountable. And I think, going back to your statement, we should have an annual or bi-annual or whatever is needed. I suggest we do that. I'm requesting our administration to host, to request these companies that we come and celebrate, and we do all these different things, but we need to make sure our residents know about these opportunities. Paul, I also asked you about the committee. Did any information you get about that business committee? committee?
We have to start with getting the different groups, because they're right, there are a number of groups here that, that do these activities, that present opportunities for the students, but yes, somebody has to gather them together, it needs a spark.
But not just students. We need opportunities for adults as well. People are trying to revamp themselves, change careers. We have underemployed, not employed.
So, it wasn't just for students, it was for adults as well. So, the, the, what we need to look at is ways that we can keep people engaged. And sometimes, when you have adults involved, they can go and spread that message, they're connected to the community. If we could, just look and see exactly how that, I know we have the chamber, and there's something that I asked the chamber, a lot of people are not coming downtown. And so, people don't know about all the guidelines. So, that's something we need to figure out as well. How can we get people engaged in our district? And I don't know how that look, but it need to be a conversation, it need to be a piece, it need to be discussed, and we need to bring people at the table, to understand how that looks. So, I'm grateful that you were coming down and sharing, but that's something that I'm requesting. We need to figure out how to create that engagement. And of course, they don't have any authority, but they need to know, so they can share it with their community. And so, I'm requesting that we, we have a, a job fair, and hold these companies accountable, and find some way that we can have some people involved. I don't know if that's from a committee, or that's from a conversation, if we already got a committee with the chamber, getting those people a part of that committee, whatever that is, we need to make it happen. So, I want to thank you so much for coming down, I did request for that information. But going forward, I want to make sure that we can move Mobile forward for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dorch, for coming down, and I do agree with you, and for Councilman Penn's point, Councilman Penn, before the pandemic, I know that myself, and Councilman Richardson, we had held several job fairs within our district, and even Public Works had held a job fair once before. The issue that we was running into, that a lot of times, the grandparents and the parents will come and get the application, and then they'll take it back to the kids, you know, and the people that work. But you do have my commitment that, I mean, we can do that on our own. So, my thing about it, I know that the holidays are coming up, and matter of fact, we was at the Port Authority on yesterday, and then talking about more jobs are coming in, you know, and I was thinking that it was, it's really time for us to really gear that back up. But right before you took counsel, I know that District One and District Three, we have had several job fairs within our districts and community meetings, but that's something that we can do together, and we can sit down and do a date, and we can get with Ms. Dorch, and you can work with us, and you do have my commitment, and everything that you'll hear from us, I'm real soon, but we can do that within ourselves. All right? Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Ms. Dorch, if you can also leave your information with our assistant, and we'll get together this week on that.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, to the citizens, stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name, I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations pertaining to city business, as we've seen throughout today's meeting, and what we've been seeing going just throughout this year, there's a lack of trust that kind of needs to be addressed here. There are some matters that I wanted to touch base on, as I was signed up for, dealing with vehicles, OPR, these third-party firms, excuse me, these third-party firms, the budget amendments that are possible in the coming future, and investigatory powers, particularly as it relates to the elections. But because of the time restraints, and knowing that anyone who comes up here actually challenging things, is not going to be afforded that amount of time to speak, I'm going to keep it brief, and have to continue these in the coming days. Now, let's look at this vehicle component here. We claimed that we were going to cut back on purchases in the past three weeks, and we've seen in the past three, excuse me, we were going to cut back on the purchases this year, but we've seen in the past three weeks, where we spent nearly six million dollars on vehicles. And we saw this morning, that officers saying that they're strained, because of things that are going on in particular spaces. So it seems that we're not prioritizing the resources properly, because if we're spending four million dollars specifically on public safety vehicles, but the officers are strained to go and handle real matters in the community, that's a concern. We need to prioritize the money better. I think there's ways we can look into that. The OPR piece, we're talking about getting a consultant, I mean, before we think about what happened to Judge Graddick, with the issues that happened with OPR, we know that there are individuals who have made claims against the city, OPR has investigated, said one thing, and then he went to court, and then the judge reversed what it was that OPR was saying that happened. And we're talking about giving them additional money to keep this department going that is not being beneficial for the city. These are things that we need to look at, and it's money that's going into it, I think that's being wasted. And I was glad to see, I can't think of her name, she was an attorney, her name starts with an M, but at least there was somebody within the city, actually challenging the city matter. We're bringing all these third-party law firms on that don't really know what's going on, and then we end up with these issues coming before here, and we seen that we don't know how to handle them. So let's just get to this last piece about the elections component. We know that there's an assessment, let me be very clear with the clerk's office, the results are sponsored by the administration, and then you all pass it. All right, so this is nothing to the clerk's office, or the chief election officer, we've already went through this debate, we're gonna need the time to actually really review what's going on, but there's tape that's printed each year, and they put this tape on the bill that's supposed to result. So, if we look at New Shallow, they have one voting machine, but they had two tape strips with the results, and there were duplicated numbers, it was the same numbers repeated. And so what happened was, while that was saying that it was six hundred something.
Stop this a second, Ford. Did you sign up about?
Investigatory, those are the powers that you have, is in Chapter 11, forty-six, might be, excuse me, forty-four, that's twenty-six, are things you can do to look into these things, lots of going on. May I please reclaim my time?
I stopped the clock, but you said that next time, Madam Clerk, please make sure that they specifically put out exactly what they're gonna talk about. Don't just start this minute's backup.
As any other time before, I always say exactly what I signed up for, y'all give me the opportunity to actually say that. And so, what we need to look at is the idea that there were seven hundred and ninety-three additional numbers against what was reported from that precinct. This was reported at the precinct, some six hundred something, then you get the numbers that are officially made, and there's seven hundred and ninety-three additional points. Now, people don't just go around every weekend, we're gonna take pictures of this tape everywhere. It just so happened that somebody took time to do it this time.
Mr. President, I believe he's veered off his subject.
All right, thank you.
We know that he would believe that, I stated before as well, when you're challenging what's going on, you're not gonna be able to at the same time. Thank you, Phil.
Tom Townsend regarding fifty-two zero forty-six.
Appreciate, I think it's three minutes?
Yes.
I'm gonna clock it, I'm gonna make sure. And I'm here, I understand it's maybe tabled, the ordinance.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Townsend, let's see, I'm in Williams Street, Mobile, Alabama, is where the Alabama residents is.
She's talking about what now?
This is for the Blight Ordinance, fifty-two.
The registry.
Registration for the vacant, sorry, we keep calling it the Blight Ordinance. All right, I'm not starting my time yet. I'm just kidding. Okay, so, and I understand it's kind of been put aside, I had a project manager here, and if I'm not here the week that you all take it up again, I asked him to do it, he said it's not in his area of responsibility, so I wanted to jump up and just say it, so. But the, I've been a building owner in downtown Mobile for over two decades, a building owner and co-owner. And overall, the ordinance is gonna be great, I think, it's, it'll put some motivation in building owners to make a decision, we've got a lot of empty building inventory downtown, that'll add some motivation, you know, people have to take some costs into account on holding on the building versus either developing it, or selling it. So that part, I love, you know. The part that's difficult is, one of the buildings that we have is large, it, the way the zoning code works, it, it makes it difficult to develop larger buildings, there's technical reasons, I'll be happy to get into it, but what ends up coming out at the, at the end of the zoning code for downtown Mobile, is a restaurant, or a small bar, or residential use. Now, this building we have, and a lot of the old buildings in downtown, don't have parking, they didn't have cars in eighteen fifty, so you can't really use, utilize residential as much as you'd like, if you can't give people a parking spot where they don't have to walk three blocks with groceries. So that makes, and this is not everybody, but it's just, the regulations, I like this regulation, the regulations that are on the books, it would help tremendously if the city council could tweak them, it would help the owners to develop some of these properties for more uses than, than just residential, and, and small bar, or restaurant. One of the issues with restaurants is our population, and I'll share these numbers with you, but from two thousand to two thousand and twenty, we have eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four less Mobile residents, we have the same building inventory, so you end up with, with less commerce. When you do the quick math, eleven thousand, the average Mobile per capita median income is thirty-four thousand, you times eleven thousand eight hundred, but.
Counselor, there's anyone on Graham, ask them a minute, one more minute.
Fifty-eight million dollars in commerce leaves the city with that population, thirty-four thousand in, in median income, which we're pretty sure the people moving over there are higher income than thirty-four, let's just use that, thirty-four thousand. Discretionary income, which is what you spend at restaurants, and concerts, whatever, that, that out of the thirty-four thousand, you get about five thousand dollars. So take eleven thousand eight hundred, times it by five thousand dollars, it's fifty-eight million dollars in economics, that's ten miles, twelve miles away. We, when we develop, you use a rule of thumb, that people spend eighty percent of their discretionary income ten miles from their house. We get some of that by the people that work here, but you lose a pretty good amount of fifty-eight million dollars, and we have the same building inventory in downtown Mobile. So, that makes restaurants a little risky. If you, if you watch, which we do, track restaurants.
And the questions, comments from the council.
I've got a question.
Mr. Reynolds.
So you're, you're making an argument that it doesn't make sense for your business or others, in many respects, to build a restaurant? And there is some issue with the zoning code in downtown Mobile that could maybe provide some relief in that respect. How does that relate to the real property maintenance enforcement? If you could close the circle on that.
Thanks, yes.
Make that relation.
Yeah, so, so we want to motivate building owners to put money into their buildings, and it's an investment. A lot of times, if you're the, the property owner, you have tenants that'll, that'll sign in with an LLC, they don't have much risk, when they do, you want their business to work out. And if you're building, and a lot of times, you're pre-developing it, so you, you make an agreement, I'll put five hundred thousand dollars in my empty property, and you're gonna sign a ten-year lease, and you're gonna make those payments. So we have to ride with the tenant, in really a partnership, to make sure that the development works economically. Did that close the loop at all, or?
I guess, I mean, not, well, no, not really. What do you want changed in this?
There's a, there's an, and I, this will get into the technical details, but there's a rule that says if you have a ninety-nine, well, real quick, the, the, this ordinance on the books has a graduated scale based on building size, says if you're this many square feet, you're five hundred, well, the zoning ordinance says ninety-nine, no matter what your building size, if you, if you want to put more than a ninety-nine occupancy in your building, you go before the planning commission. If there was a graduated, we have a ten thousand square foot building, we're treated this, on one of them, you know, most of them were fine.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, again, is, in regards to the real property maintenance and enforcement article, I understand what you're saying, that there's some modification that may be necessary within the zoning code, that could, you know, help redevelopment outside of this particular ordinance. But what I am interested hearing about is, what in this ordinance do you not like, or would you suggest that it be changed too?
Okay, yeah, and I'll, and I'll wrap that up. That's, that's the one side of it that's not totally relevant to this. I like, I like most of it. I mean, the, the, I still, like, we talked previously with the council, I, there, it's gonna be burdensome in the beginning, with the tying in fire monitoring into it, I forgot to mention previously, in previous discussions, it's not just electrical, which that looks better, the temporary electrical, that's, that's, you no longer have to bring your old building up to complete electrical code, that's a huge plus, but you, you still have to get a phone line in, so you've got a little bit of infrastructure you need to spend, that's a little bit of burden. I think it's still gonna be in the ten thousand dollar range or so, the insurance is another three to four thousand. Not everybody does insurance. My dad's a lawyer, he says, don't buy insurance, because then they will sue, so, and I think the city actually uses that sometimes, that, that thinking.
Mr. President. Ms. Townsend. Hold on, Mr. Carroll. You done, Mr. Reynolds?
I, I think this.
Hold on, Mr. Reynolds, I might ask the audience to please see if you're talking, but I hit this gag, it's gonna be thirty days. Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, I've asked for this ordinance to be held over one week, and I think there's some room for some modification to it, in my opinion. I think there's some subjectivity that could be removed for it, where it's more clear to a property owner. I would like to have a conversation with you, to better understand exactly the issues that you have, and see if maybe there is some, you know, commonality that can be found that resolves the vacancy issue, I think that's the objective of the ordinance to begin with, but also, you know, does it in a, in a way that's not too punitive to any one person, or any one property owner. So I'd, I'd, I'd welcome that conversation, you know, after this meeting, or sometime this week.
Yeah, that'd be great, that's all I had, so, appreciate it.
Mr. Carroll.
Just two quick things. One, on the phone line, most systems now, the phone lines are wireless, so you don't have to hardwire them, your hardwire would only be done when you come in to do your complete development for your business, so don't even, you're way overthinking it. And then, two, on the ninety-nine person rule per development, I understand that having to go back to the planning commission and design and plan pushes your development back, and costs you more time, as far as you having to pay the fee with the, with the empty building, but you, knowing, knowing, if, for you, it's a different situation, because you already own the building, but for a developer coming in, or builder or owner coming in to purchase, they know that coming in, that's a cost they have to carry in the development, so it's planned within their performance, so you gotta look at it both ways. It's gonna be a little burdensome on the people that already are established downtown, who already have a system in place, I understand that. But in order to change the ninety-nine person rule, then this council has to reevaluate what goes, and how it goes to the planning commission, and when, and then we can take that up, and you need to ask this next council when it comes in, to help you address that with Shala B. Cohen and coming in administration. I think there'll be open ears, because that's gonna help develop downtown. So, but that's not an issue, that's gonna be covered under the, I keep wanting to say section forty, fifty-two, but it won't be covered under this, that's something we have to cover somewhere else. And I understand your concern, because it deters what happens in, in this, and it slows down what you're trying to do, but we can't handle that in this section, it has to be handled somewhere else.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming, as always.
Appreciate you, also.
You know the questions, comments from this council.
Mr. President, I'd ask the gentleman to provide your telephone number to the clerk's office, so that I can call you. Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you for coming down. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, we have a citizen that did not get an opportunity to speak on the public carrying infrastructure at fifteen fifty-one Kellogg Street.
Okay, Counsel, this opened up the public hearing for fifteen fifty-one Kellogg Street. Come on down.
Yes, my name is Glenn Thornton, and I'm really apologizing, Councilman, I missed trying to understand what you were saying, I left my hearing aids at home, I'm sorry. But I had surgery on my knees, and I've been about four years behind on my property, the reading that went. reason it went down like it did. I have pictures of it, how it used to look here and also I look even worse now. But I have a architect and engineers, they working on the blueprints, if y'all want to look at those. And he didn't get a chance to finish up everything yesterday like he thought, but he told me to bring these, let y'all see these and that, you know, that they are working on it. But I'm really sorry that I misunderstood, Mr. President. I mean, when you said three people, I thought, after the first person came up, I had another person in between. Next thing, we was in a storm, yeah, but I appreciate that. The only thing I know is that, you know, I'm just doing the best I can. I'm on medication and I just got behind on things with this COVID went on back in '21, when I first had the problem that, you know, worked with me on the building, but right after that, just had total knee surgery on my right leg and then about a month later it came apart and had to go right back in again. And I still got to have the left leg done and I just dread going through that one. But I got all the information here on that. And I'll ask the council, if you would, if you just give me time to get these things in place where I can get the permit or we can go ahead and fix it back. And I'm hoping that once I get it back open up, I can hire veterans and other people there in this body shop that I got. And I really appreciate it if y'all could give me more time to see if I can get the building permit. And I'll try to get that as soon as they get through with the rest of the architectural work.
Mr. David, what's the max we can give, 90 days or 60 days? We're going to give you 60 days to go ahead and get that permit pulled. I know you said you had to get with an architect and everything, but if you have any additional questions, just contact the gentleman right there and everything, but we'll give you 60 days to go ahead and get that permit pulled.
I thank you, President.
Okay.
And thank you all, the councilmen, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming down. And this public hearing, anyone else who would like to speak on this public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Ordinance is held over 52-046, adopt chapter 52 Real Property Maintenance and Enforcement Article 8 Vacant Structure Registry for Henry Aaron Loop.
Move to lay over one week.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over 40-1044, declare the structure at 265 Cuba Street, a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Motion to table.
Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over 40-1044, declare the structure at 265 Cuba Street, a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Motion to table.
Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over 21-1245, authorized contract with Bill Smith for emergency generator. 01-1246, authorized franchise agreement with fiber utility network doing business as Alabama Fiber Network. 08-1248, approved purchase order to Bobcat of Mobile for compact loader. 08-1251, approved purchase order to Dozer's compaction roller. 08-1254, approved purchase order to Thompson Tractor Company for emergency generator. 08-1255, approved purchase order to Tractor and Equipment Company for Dozer. 09-1257, reallocate funds from Capital Project IT Technical and Infrastructure Upgrades to Capital Project IT Fiber Expansions Upgrades. 21-1258, authorized contract with Allred Architectural Group. 21-1259, authorized contract with George Glasser to provide professional services, officer of professional responsibility. 21-1260, authorized contract with National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico. 21-1261, authorized contract with P.L. Russell LLC for upgrades to Mobile Riverfront Redevelopment, Cooper Riverside Park and Great Lawn. 21-1262, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for access, management and signal upgrades on Dolphin Street. 21-1263, authorized contract with Magna and Russell Electric Company. 25-1264, accept temporary construction easements for miscellaneous drainage repairs. 21-1266, authorized contract with Macalana Construction Company for construction of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue Complete Streets Project.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
09-1256, authorized revision of the DECA Community Development Block Grant.
Motion to lay over one week.
Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over one week.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64-049 through 88-053.
By council rules, these will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03-1268 through 03-1350.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk.
03-1268 and 1269, reappointing Louis Golden to the Board of Adjustment and appointing Crystal Taylor to the History Museum of Mobile Board. 09-1270, transfer funds from District Two Discretionary Account to Parks and Recreation, James Seale Center. 37-1271, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class two license to quick pack store on St. Stevens Road. 40-1272, 1273, are declaring the structures at 610 Peter Avenue and 507 Booker Street, public nuisances in order and them demolished. 58-1276 and 1277 are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing cost for removal of weeds, Groups 1668 and 1666. 60-1278 and 1279 approve award a special bonus to the Real Estate Asset Management Employee of the Month and the Officer of the Month. 60-1280 through 62-1296 are determining appropriations to Marching Cougars Band, Main Art Four Foundation, Old Shell Road, Magnus School, PTO, The Grinds Young Entrepreneur Academy, Alabama Picard Festival, the Child Advocacy Center, Theater High School, Ridgefield Property Owners Association, Whimmy Place Homeowners Association, Dedicated Dentists, Inc., Hands Up Charity, Hillsdale Booster Club, Mobile Municipal Fifty Boys Raiders, Mobile Bay Area Veterans Commission, National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico, Inc., Mobile Council, Navy League Serve a Public Purpose and Approve Payment.
So moved.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
03-1350, reappoint Adam Metcalf to the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
40-1274 and 1275 are declaring the structures at 962 Government Street, public nuisance in order it secured and declaring the structure at 1551 Kellogg Street, a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Motion to lay over 60 days.
Second. Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over 60 days.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21-1297 through 21-1299.
Moved to waive the rules for immediate consideration of 21-1299 with the rest of the resolutions being laid over for one week. Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule waived, Madam Clerk.
21-1299, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for construction, engineering and inspection services for Dolphin Island Parkway sidewalks.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 08-1300 through 60-1348.
Moved to waive the rules for resolutions, 08-1300, 1302, 1303, 04, 06, 07, 08, 13, 15, 17, 18, 21, 08-1333, 1334 and 1343 with the rest of the resolutions being laid over for one week.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule waived, Madam Clerk.
08-1300, approved purchase order to Alamo Group Texas. 08-1302, approved purchase order to ATFM Network Cameras. 08-1303, approved purchase order to Capital Tractor. 08-1304, approved purchase order to Cathead Media. 08-1306, approved purchase order to Custom Concepts. 08-1307, approved purchase order to Custom Concepts Cart. 08-1308, approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply, Inc. 08-1313, approved purchase order to Image Trend. 08-1315, approved purchase order to Melt Water News, U.S., Inc. 08-1317, approved purchase order to Nitsom Promotional Manufacturing Corporation. 08-1318, approved purchase order to Nomic Networks. 08-1321, approved purchase orders to Port City Trailer. 08-1333, approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales. 08-1334, approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales. And.
21-43 as well.
Oh, 21, oh, okay, I'm sorry. 21-43, authorized contract with Friends of Magnolia Cemetery for maintenance and operation of the cemetery.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass.
Call for public hearings. Call for public hearing, 41-1349, call for public hearing to consider vacation of all rights waived located within Lot 1 of MAA ACDC subdivision scheduled November the 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
District One?
No announcements.
Thank you. District Two, Councilman Carroll?
No announcements.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
Very briefly, the Crest Motel has been torn down and I want to give a shout out to Hagan Fence, they've named them Hagan's heroes now because they have bought the property that the old Crest Motel was on and they brought a bulldozer in and tore it down last week. So congratulations.
District Seven, President Gregory, Vice President.
No announcements.
District Six, Councilman Woods. Nice, sir, appreciate it. Anything from administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Properly moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?